Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, July 10, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Back to open session. We are reconvening from closed session and there are no reportable actions taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamada.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Mayor Santinas.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Hamada, Mayor Protem Hamada.
Motion by Councilmember Sanchez to excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Hamada. Without a second, the motion died. All right. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Victor Sanchez and the pleasurable allegiance will be led by Len Gorecki, the Assistant City Manager and Director of Public Works. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear Father, thank you for every seat that has been filled here today, for each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room. We thank you. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and daily instructions. We have talents, abilities, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Ready us to make every moment count, in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Please address the flag, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez and Director and Assistant City Manager Gorecki. Let me start with the city council announcements for this evening. At the June 26 city council meeting, we had a very informative presentation from the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District about what we need to know about mosquitoes in the city of Bellflower. If you missed the presentation, the PowerPoint is available on the city's website at www.bellflower.org. If you have any vector control questions or would like to submit a mosquito service request, please visit www.gla.mosquito.org or call (562) 944-9656. And I know that they're very responsive and they will call you back. Councilmember Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Join us for a free movie, Under the Stars. The next movie on our schedule is Selena, which will play tomorrow, Tuesday, July 11th. You're welcome to bring your own picnic or visit one of our local businesses near the Town Center Plaza to receive dinner. The movie will begin after dusk, about 8:30. And remember to bring your own lawn chair and no pets, please. For more information, you can call the phone number (562) 804-1424, extension 2261. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. Come join us in the downtown Bellflower for great music, dancing, and exciting family fun at the next Summer Street Fest. These events feature live music, food crafts, and business vendors, inflatable slides, and obstacle courses, and games with Bellflower Recreation in Motion, also known as BRIM. The next Street Fest will be July 20th. The event begins at 6:30 PM and will conclude at 9:30 PM. Entrance is free and vendor pricing will vary. For more information, please call (562) 804-1424, extension 2261. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Ray Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join the next morning mingle at the Chamber Building, which takes place this Tuesday or next Tuesday or this Tuesday this month, July 25th, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That's like an open house or a networking that the community and businesses can gather during the morning. They have coffee, raffle prizes, and whatever. It's kind of a fun event if you've got time to go there. For more information, you can call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce, (562) 867-1744. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. For tonight, we have one presentation, and this is in recognition of the American Disabilities Act Awareness Month. And I'd like to invite my colleagues on the west side of the dais. And I'd like to invite Dr. Sue Elhessen to join us, please. All right. Good evening again, everyone. Let's go down here. Okay. Down here. Oh, want to take a photo? Okay. This is my good side, okay? This month has been proclaimed as the American Disabilities Awareness Month, and it kind of started way back in 1990 when the American Disabilities Act was enacted by Congress and it was signed into law. So upon Councilmember Coops' request, I will read the whole proclamation, because I don't want to disappoint him.
Yeah.
I just want to highlight a couple of whereas's here, because this really means a lot. And this one is really important in terms of the proclamation. Whereas ADA prevents discrimination based on disability, requires that employers provide reasonable accommodations, ensures that public accommodations meet accessibility requirements, and is recognized as one of the most important civil rights laws in history. So this is really important, because we try our very best to make accommodations, and we know that government agencies, especially the school district, the cities, and the state, we try to make a lot of improvements. And you will notice that in terms of the city, we're making a lot of improvements currently. We're doing Bellflower Boulevard south of the freeway, lots of improvements there to make sure that the aprons are basically ADA compliant. We're doing the same thing on Lakewood Boulevard, starting from Somerset all the way to Alondra, to Flower Street, and then we're going to be putting a new traffic signal on Lakewood and Cedar. And these are all in compliance with the American Disabilities Act, because as a city, this is the least that we can do to make sure that people with disabilities are accommodated. I want to make, we want to make sure that they can navigate our streets without any obstacle with so much ease. And I look back, I was born and raised in the Philippines. There's no such thing as ADA when I was growing up. And it's kind of unfortunate, because someone who's in a wheelchair is basically just confined in a house. And when I came here, I was really struck. I was really very appreciative of what the government and the private sectors are doing to accommodate people with disabilities. And so we have invited Dr. Sue Elhessen, our very dear friend of us. She is a school board member of the Bellflower High School District, to receive this proclamation on behalf of the school district and the community. Sue?
Thank you so much. I'm honored to receive this recognition. I've been a member here, a resident of the city, for over 30 years. And yes, all of the city council members are good friends of mine, and I'm honored that they're here to recognize the Americans with Disabilities Act. And it's the largest civil rights act passed besides the 1964 Civil Rights Act for people with disabilities. And the important thing is, as Mayor mentioned, is that it provides equal access for people in order to engage in every area of society. So it would be anywhere from employment, public accommodations, for example, the pools. I love the pool, and the city here has a wonderful accessible pool that I encourage everyone to also participate in. And as you mentioned, I'm a school board member, and one of my goals as a school board member is to make sure our district is accessible to all our students with disabilities and also to provide equal programs as their able-bodied peers. I think that's most important for our school district as we're moving forward in supporting our youth to get more engaged in our community. So I want to also mention that I serve on the commission for the governor. I'm appointed on the Disability Access Commission, where I support businesses specifically in gaining access and following the ADA. And there are certain funds available to support businesses in the area, and I'll be working with the city as well as our chambers to be able to support our local city in regards to businesses and having them more accessible and compliant with the ADA. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. So just to finish up, so we're proclaiming the month of July 2023 as ADA Awareness Month. And this proclamation is signed by Mayor Sanier Santayanes, Mayor Protem Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dunn, and Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Want to get a photo?
Yeah.
Want us to move here?
Yep.
I think you can move a little bit forward. A little bit forward.
Over here. Look a little taller here.
No. Then Sue becomes too short.
I have to raise my head.
There you go. Okay. Good? And before you go, I'd like to invite, I heard that Lauren Yocomiso has a presentation to make? Or a long speech? Either one.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Supervisor Janice Hahn to support our Commissioner, Dr. Elhessen, and thank the city of Bellflower for recognizing ADA Month. We join you in remembering how the Civil Rights Law was enacted to prohibit discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and we remember those who participated during the disability rights movement, so that those with disabilities could be given equal access to things we may take for granted, such as access to transportation, telecommunications, public services, and employment. I also wanted to be here to let you know, as a result of a motion put forth one year ago by Supervisor Hahn, we have a new department in LA County called the Department of Aging and Disabilities. It's solely dedicated to serving older adults and residents of LA County with disabilities. As a result, or excuse me, it's important for us to be able to focus on providing better services to these residents. Thank you all for allowing me to speak, and I have a scroll that I would like to present to the city in appreciation for you recognizing ADA Month and for your contributions to continue benefiting the residents of LA County.
Okay. Wow.
All together.
Okay. I just want to say, this is the first time we get a commendation for giving a commendation. Wow. Okay. Thank you again, Lauren and Dr. Sue Elhessen. That's a first for this evening. Okay. All right. Moving on to item 10, public comments. Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
All right. Please sign in and speak directly to the microphone and state your name. Thank you.
Darlene Palacios, you know me. It's almost a year now. I'm still advocating to try to get yellow flashing lights on my corner where disabled people are dying and have died. We've had a death toll rate. The last person died September 4th, so I've been coming here since last September 4th. And I understand we're supposed to be getting flashing, yellow lights, but the date seems to keep pushing out. It's my understanding with the mayor that they were ordered and they will be by November 1st, because the last thing I was told by the Safety Commission was it was August 1st. So just confirming that date. Moving on to the other problem. I live on a block where there are a nursing home on one end of the block and assisted living on the other end. We've had several people die because they can't get across the street. The city did eventually move the crosswalk from the south side to the north side. It's great to see these disabled people in the crosswalk, but they're still unable to get across the street in time before they're no longer here. We've had two within the last three years. The last guy died September 4th. The lady before that died a few years before that. Both were hit at high speed, died instantly on the ground. You know, the last one, I saw them CPR-ing, and my neighbor saw the one before that. And as I've shared before, there's a huge death toll and a lot of people have been injured. But we've had so many deaths on that corner. Now, moving on to the next issue. My neighbor isn't here, but he had a, one of the tree's sidewalks fell. I know there's a lot of problems with the sidewalks in Bellflower, but on his property in particular, it took it to a peak like this. So now the little kids, as I stated last meeting, are on their little electric bike zooming, because it's like a stunt ramp. It takes you off airborne. So now we've got the little kids using the stunt ramp. He has a special situation where the sidewalk's like this, so the kids are flying over it. It launches them. And there are several other places on the block, but this one launches them in particular. And the handicapped people, they struggle to get over. And I, well, I'm at his house several times in front of the build, his house with him, when, you know, people with their walkers are trying to figure out how to get over this, because it is like a tent, and it is like six inches above the ground. That tree raised it. And it's unique in that it makes the greatest bike launch ramp. So we have little kids flying over that launch ramp. So he would like to get that taken care of. He's worried somebody's going to get injured in front of his house. He was here last week. He told me he might not make it. Anyway, I'm advocating still for safety of the disabled people on my block, and I'm not going away. I hope that eventually we can get the yellow flashing lights on my side and the unsafe sidewalks fixed on his side.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Palacios. Thank you so much. Just for information of the public here, I personally called Mrs. Palacios last week after I got information from our Director of Public Works, and he had given me four months for completion. The flashing lights have been ordered, so we're waiting for that. So as soon as it becomes available, we will get it installed. Mr. Gorecki, were you able to inspect that, what, you got-
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk embankment, so to speak?
Yeah. So there is a lift. It has been temporary asphalt patched, so there's no actual lift. As Ms. Palacios stated, it is lifted, but also from the meeting two weeks ago, I had a detailed conversation with the property owner and gave him the estimated timeframe for when we'll be replacing that sidewalk as part of our on-call concrete. So he is completely up to speed with all that from the meeting two weeks ago.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annie. I'm from Bellflower, homeowner. The reason I'm here to speak is on a couple of things. One is, what do we have in the form of emergency preparedness? I've taken two and a half years of emergency preparedness, and I would like to be able to inform the Bellflower residents of what they can do personally for emergency preparedness. And I would like to know if we have something corporately that we can do for emergency preparedness. I know there have been a number of times when there have been projections that everything's going to be shut down with the internet. So do we have a Plan B? And what can we do personally and as a city in case that happens? Also, I'm concerned about the 5G. I can send you a lot of information on that, but I would like to adopt as a city that we don't install the 5G, because it causes a lot of major health problems, and they're irreversible health problems. Secondly, for the 5G, I don't know how many of you know this, but it depends on the batch, batch number of what people got injected into them if they took the quote-unquote vaccine, but there's a lot of graphene oxide in there. It makes people magnetic, so maybe you've seen some people, they can put a penny or wrench or some tool on them and it sticks to them. Well, that not only makes you magnetic so that you can interact with the cell phone, and it's going to connect your brain to the iCloud, but also it's going to interact with the 5G, and it's going to cause more people to get permanently disabled. So I would like to encourage the city to not install the 5G in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Regardless of comment about emergency preparedness, that is very, no, no, I just want to inform the public that the subject matter was very timely, because during the budget session last, sometime in May, I asked for a drill to make sure that our preparedness plan is up to date. And I think the staff is scheduling one for, especially for City Hall, and we will inform you, we need to make some changes. But the plan is available in the city's website, and if you wish, as tonight, Public Safety Director Joel Hartman will be ready and willing to speak with you directly on this subject matter. All right.
Hello. Good evening. Guy Bremer. July 4th evening. All due respect to public safety, but District 5, did we have any coverage for illegal fireworks? It didn't seem like it. Beach in California and then across the freeway south with the 91, Housen. We had nonstop, and I say nonstop for four hours, and worse has been in recent memory. The amount of smoke and pollution is unacceptable. I think we had two fires around Bellflower caused by fireworks. The streets still smelled like gunpowder the next day. One resident fired off so much it stained the street. And I just don't understand how, I mean, we're, you know, right on the 91. I don't, I just don't understand how we don't have some coverage for that district. I don't know if there's any tickets written in the area, but we're not getting it done with the $2,000 fine, not at all. People sat out there with no fear at all. And, I mean, four hours. I mean, nonstop. This is like Disneyland-style stuff, going so high in the sky. It's, we need to figure something out. City of Paramount wrote about 200 tickets. They're writing tickets to people that are hosting illegal firework events. Our program, I just think it's not getting it done. So I'd like to see some improvement on that. And then even the legal fireworks, I mean, if we're trying to do everything we can for the environment, I mean, maybe we need to think about even getting rid of those, because even those put off a lot of smoke. It's a very unhealthy day the next day after July 4th. Next item is, last council meeting, we had two unexused absences. And I'm just curious, how many unexused absences can a councilman have? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. I just want to address the issue of fireworks. It is very frustrating. As you mentioned, even the $2,000 fine doesn't really discourage some people to do fireworks. I rode along with our deputy sheriffs and our staff that evening, and I can assure you, they gave out citations. Okay? Those, I think those citations have been sent out already? They've been sent out already? And from what I can gather is, at this point, there's at least 120 citations written up that evening. And as I mentioned earlier, I rode with one of the cars, and our car alone, basically, I think, at the minimum, we cited 20 individuals or residence addresses. And my recollection is there's about six vehicles going around the city. So I know it's kind of frustrating, but just like one of the deputies that I rode with many, many years ago, the issue is, if you're a fisherman, you cannot catch all fish, but you try to catch as many as you can. So the message here is, we're trying to make it as a deterrent, send a message, and hopefully, once they get the citation for $2,000, that will teach them a lesson, and the word gets out, and that's our desire. But again, there's going to be some individuals that will continue to do fireworks, so we just need to be more vigilant about it. And we will talk with our public safety staff and see what more can we do to discourage our residents from firing those illegal fireworks during the 4th of July week, especially the few days before 4th of July. And worst of all, the day of 4th of July is really bad. All right. Mr. Butts?
All right. Two items, if I got time for two items. The first item is Sheriff's Department. I've had some break-ins and stuff over this past year. At the business, I lost 26 grand worth of power equipment one night. And then also filed another complaint of a break-in at the place again. There's two, two deals. The first one's almost a year ago. Well, then I have three more. So I got a total of five complaints filed with the Sheriff's Department. Well, the last one, I went down to Lakewood, because I wasn't getting any place, so I asked for the watch captain and filed the complaint with him. So he sends me up here to Bellflower to talk to the detectives. Well, the sad part with the detectives, when I got here, another one arrived, so it was time for lunch, I guess. And he said, "Well, I'll look up your information and all this and take care of this." I said, "Well, and I'll get in touch with you." I say, "You can't," because this last one is when they stole the cell phone, which I got another one right now, but he's going to contact me. I don't know how he's going to contact me, but then he doesn't even ask who I am. So I don't know who he's going to contact. I don't know where their mind is. And I've done my own due diligence on tracking down some of this stuff, and I've got records of who took some of this stuff and everything else. And I'm willing to press the charges. I've had my bank compromised, my social security number, and everything else. So I'm dealing with a whirlwind, and I know who one of them is. And I'm willing to press the charges, and they even took a personal check out of my business, tried to cash it at the bank, which now makes a federal charge, because they tried to extract money out of my social security money. Now it's a government felony. Nothing's happening. Sheriff's Department, nothing happening. I've got it where there's five, three women and two guys involved with probably 15% of the crime going on in Bellflower, but it doesn't seem to be interesting. So you want to put another cop on the street? You said last meeting I was here? What good is it? I helped you with the utility tax, which was going to be, go to sunset, and it never went to sunset. I helped you get extra money for it. Nothing's happening. You needed a whole new police agency, even if you got to pay additional money and do away with some of the other frivolous stuff. The Highway Patrol wouldn't put up with none of this. Downey is expensive, but they'd never put- Downey, Downey is expensive, but they'd never put up with this. And neither would Long Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Butts, thank you so much.
I know, my three minutes is up because of this crap.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here from, I started last March, I'm back full circle. So, when I came to Bellflower in 2020, bought a new home, and then learned in 2022, homes can be sold in Bellflower without final permits, certificates of occupancy and code violations. And you're all aware of the story. So I hope going forward, we can prevent that from happening to other people that move into the city and you'll figure a plan out to do that. The developer builder intensely deceived Bellflower homeowners to deprive them of value and gain something of value for himself when not disclosing at the time of sale. So, you know the guy. What's If, our friend? What If? So, I think fraud occurs due to three elements of the fraud triangle. Rationalization and opportunity. And this gentleman looks for opportunity. And he moves from LLC to LLC. And unfortunately, Bellflower provided him that opportunity. So he's demonstrated that he cannot be trusted, cannot be transparent, and he's very unfair. So I hope you all take some steps to stop him from operating in Bellflower. Hopefully, it'll go on to other cities. And Los Angeles County will stop contractors like this. There's many of them, his construction company and his realtor. So, do not allow the wassif's of the world to operate in Bellflower. As homeowners, we invest in the city. As an employer, we provide jobs for the citizens of the community and opportunities for the future. When I came here last March, we talked about the values, right? In our mission statement. Growing together, families, business. And it saddens me that two of my neighbors are moving out because we feel we've been let down by the city of Bellflower, the leadership and its departments. And again, my purpose here is, let's pass this, water under the bridge. Let's move forward, stop the contractors like this gentleman from operating in the city. Protect your citizens. My mission statement again, to protect and enrich the quality of life, to make Bellflower an excellent place to live, work and play. My neighbors are moving. I don't plan on going anywhere. It's good news for some of you and bad news for others. But really, gentlemen, deeds not words, deeds not words. Military expression. In my last 10 seconds, a lot of people noting on the Sheriff's Department. Guys are getting ripped off. They're not performing, they're not responding. And I think they have other parties, other communities that may pay more money than we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Coming up?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
How are you all this evening? Well, I hope. I'd like to address the fact that CRNR and the way that they're doing business here in this town, I simply feel like...
Sir, let me just, are you talking about an agenda item for this evening? CRNR?
Yes, CRNR, but I'd like to address the fact of the situations of that they mail the bills.
Yeah, you have an opportunity to address that.
Oh, later in the thing? Okay, could I?
This is for any item that is not on the agenda.
Okay, I had a couple more things, if that'd be all right then. Right now, I don't feel safe in the city of Bellflower. I walk my dog a lot, right? And there are nothing but people on electric bikes zooming around, okay? And they seem to think that the sidewalk is where they're supposed to be. I don't understand why any of them aren't on the street. I don't understand why there isn't some kind of licensing or something that can be done as far as ticketing them. Or, you know, I believe the Sheriff's Department should be focusing on them and they should come right around and they should just take the vehicle away from them. Okay, it's not safe. They're going so fast that if a person hits you, you will be crippled. Okay, you can't hear them. You won't see them unless you're turning around all the time, okay? And there's nobody out there with any respect, okay? It's the same problem I'm having on the street that I live in when it's Maple, okay? There are people going down that street 70, 80, 90 miles an hour, okay? If the Sheriff's Department is looking for something to do at lunch, it's only two blocks from the courthouse. They can come right over there and sit there and probably write 10 tickets, okay? You know, I don't, people have put up signs that say, you know, "Please don't drive so fast." I would like to know if there's any opportunity to use the power poles to put some kind of reflective lettering that would say, "Please, don't drive so fast," or something like that, or to put up mock cameras. There is no way to stop these people. There is somebody that has been driving down my street at 4:00 AM every night with their lights off. I don't know why. They're trying to kill cats, kill whoever's out there. I don't know, it's the same car. What am I supposed to do about that guy? Throw a rock at him? Throw a baseball bat at him? Throw something out there, okay? I don't know. All I know is this cat is crazy. He comes down here, I mean, like clockwork, you can set your clock at 4:00 AM every morning, all right, with his lights off, going 80 miles an hour, down Maple Street, all right? And it's a problem. I don't see anybody addressing the situation with all the speed and all the problem that's going on in this town, all right? I've yet to see any officer write anybody on a bicycle a ticket since I've been in Bellflower since 1998, all right? And I'm on the street almost every day with my animals, all right? And I've yet to see one ticket being written to anybody that's putting every single person in jeopardy who walks the sidewalks, okay? You know, maybe we need some bike lanes. But right now, I believe you could hire somebody separately and pay everybody's salary here with the tickets that I just spoke about that could be written.
Okay, sir, can you talk to Joel Huckman? Because you know, the individual who drives without lights and things like that, you can give the information to Joel, he's right there.
Okay.
So we can do something about it.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, moving along. The next item is item 11A, Mr. Stewart?
It's a public hearing. It's consideration of possible action. Induct public hearing to consider delinquent refuse service charges and adopt resolution number 23-25. A resolution ordering delinquent refuse service charges be assessed against the property owners and properties and such charges be transferred to the county tax rolls. And we have Natalie Rivera Estrada with the staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council.
Good evening.
I'll begin with some background on this item. CRNR provides solid waste and recycling services throughout the city of Bellflower. CRNR bills customers directly for these services. Refuse service charges become delinquent if not paid within 30 days. The Bellflower Municipal Code defines procedure for collections of delinquent refuse service charges, and the city retains 10% of the delinquent amount. The timeline for this year was as follows. On May 31st, CRNR sent the city a list of the delinquencies. On June 9th, CRNR noticed the customers. On June 16th, the city sent a notice to property owners. On June 30th and July 7th, the notice of public hearing was published. Tonight is the public hearing. The last day for payment will be July 20th, and the final list will be sent to the county by August 10th. Here we have a comparison of the delinquent refuse service charges from last year and this year. This year, as of May 31st, there were 602 delinquent accounts amounting to $156,641. And as of July 1st, there were 347 accounts delinquent amounting to $108,474. The recommendation to the City Council is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence. After considering the evidence, adopt resolution number 23-25, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation. We have Crystal Denning with CRNR here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you, Natalie. Good presentation. Can you show the previous chart one more time? Okay, so I was looking at this July 1st from last year to July 1st of this year. So, it looks like there's not much change, right? From 344 to 347. And the amount increased by less than $2,000. So, it's kind of almost similar.
Yeah, it's pretty similar, yeah.
Okay. And I noticed on the listing here, on the, there's a few that are over $2,000. So I'm assuming that those are multifamily homes?
Yeah, most of those are multifamily. They have more than one property, more than one home on the property. So, they'll have commercial multifamily rates as well.
So what happens, so there's only one bill for them? For the multifamily?
Yeah, yeah, there's usually one bill for the property itself.
Okay. So who gets the tax bill for, in that case?
So it would be the property owner.
Or if there's an HOA, the HOA will be responsible?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very good. And so Crystal is here to answer any questions. All right, good. Any question from my fellow council members?
No question.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all right. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, second by Councilmember Sanchez to open the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. All right, so this is now your opportunity to speak about this item. Please come to the podium. Again, please sign in and then state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Anthony Russell. I've had my own business and I understand that the problems that they're having with the situation and how they're not getting paid. I don't believe that they're actually digging into the situation as deeply as they should. My first issue is the fact that I have neighbors. And as with the Bellflower, there are three different properties on the Bellflower, okay? I pay the same price as a single-family home as these people do, and there's 10 people living on that property. They have the same three bins and they pay the same price, okay? It all boils down to whether they're going to start weighing the trash or not. They need to weigh the trash so it can be fair for everybody, okay? It wouldn't be that hard to put a weight system on those trucks. There are other trucks in the County of Los Angeles that have weight systems with other companies, okay? I don't ever feel with CRNR, well, secondly, okay, CRNR has raised their percentage and cost to us 49% since 2019, all right? I believe that's a little extreme in the last four years that it's gone up half, okay? You know, it's a situation where I also don't feel that they are billing correctly, all right? Or they posting any kind of bills. For instance, they're going to collect their bills tonight. I am delinquent, I am going to pay my bill. But at the same time, on your delinquent thing that they tell you about, they don't tell you how to pay it off, okay? I'm going to go ahead and pay mine off. But even if I pay it off until July, I can almost guarantee the council that there's going to be whatever a late fee charge, $3, $4, okay, when I pay the full amount. Because I haven't even got my bill yet, all right? They're sending these bills from Tempe, Arizona, okay? I get my bill every month or whenever they send them on the 19th, okay? With the beginning of the envelope itself says Stanton, okay? If you were mailing that from Stanton, it would be here in two or three days, okay? All right. Because they do get their money from this, I believe they focus on their actual fees, all right? Their late payment fees. That's the big business for CRNR. That's really what I'm feeling like. As a customer that is hand-tied, I mean, if I, there's no other opportunity for me to bury my organic waste, to leave the other trash at work, okay? And to be trashless in Bellflower, okay? I will still pay to CRNR, no matter what, okay?
Sir, do you have any issue with the listing of delinquent accounts?
What's that?
Do you have any issue with these accounts?
Well, just the fact that I believe that they're, I mean, they seem to be billing late fees over late fees over late fees.
Okay, but you have no issue, you're not one of these.
Oh, no, not with the fact that they're trying to get their money. No, I have the issues with the fact that the way mostly that the business is being done in general, okay? And I don't believe, you know, I believe their purpose is mailing bills late.
We heard you, sir. We heard, I heard you, okay? So this item is about challenging all these lists, all these names or addresses for their billings. That is the purpose of this public hearing.
Which never changes year by year. You'll always do it because you always do that, okay? But I don't think they make it very clear when they take it off the taxes. I mean, if you want to go down one single avenue here, then why don't they put it in escrow fees? So they don't have to wait all year long. Figure out a way to do it in the escrow fees.
That is the process right now. So we're going to abide by the process right now that was well-defined. What they're going to be doing, as explained by Natalie, that is the process that we need to follow.
Which is the tax delinquent thing every year, which goes through. And it basically boils down to a fact, which would be my last question or second question. Why don't you get all the money, okay? They always take it all the way down to either $70, $80, $90 where they can turn around the very next month and put a late payment fee on that. If you're going to get your money and put a tax lien on somebody's property where it raises their escrow fees, why don't you take all the money?
Sir, they have to follow the process. This is the process right now. There's certain dates that they need to take certain steps. And they're doing that. Unless you're telling me that they're not following the process.
Well, I don't have the process in front of me to document.
So, from my understanding is, and we can call on Crystal later on, I want to assure you that they, as far as I know, they follow the process. And I'm sure that staff can confirm that. They are following the dates when this delinquency notice is going to be. Can you show the previous slide? So that is the process. So unless you're questioning the process, then we have something to talk about.
Mayor, I think, Mr. Russell? So after you settle up with CRNR, you're talking about a late payment on your next bill? Billing cycle.
Because I haven't gotten it lately, okay? So I will pay all the way through. You know, when you send out the delinquent fee, you don't really give a person a chance to pay it in full because it stops in June.
So then you have a late fee. I think that's what he was upset about.
Okay, in April, all right? So, you know, a person that doesn't have experience with all this will walk in there, pay this, think they've paid everything, okay? And they'll have two months' bill still with two months' late, with two more late payments coming on there, pop, pop.
So we can have Crystal address your question?
Yeah, we can address the question.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask it? So, you're here every year, you come here so we can know you, right?
Well, yeah, you're right.
You're familiar to me.
Right.
So, you go all, the whole year not paying the trash bill, and then we, you're here. And then you're going to pay it. You already said you're going to pay it.
Right.
So, why did you do that to yourself?
Well, it's more about the fact that you don't offer anything else in the sense of, I was able to be trashless for a long time, okay? You don't give anybody the opportunity, especially nowadays, to be trashless, okay? Two, I mean, it's a blanket situation when you let this company do whatever seems to do. I mean, in all of these notices, how come there's no notice that they raised their prices 49%?
There has been, it's a contract.
I didn't get anything in my paperwork at all, okay? Anybody else get?
No, 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 sir, you addressed me here, sir.
I'm sorry.
But yeah, it's a contract that the city and we decide on the contract after it's vetted through staff or whatever, and then we approve it.
Right, and then I remember the last time that we talked, I think the first time that we talked, I came in here and they were crying because of the bills were so high and gas was so high. And the city gave them an allotment, right? Well, I haven't seen them bring that back now the business is so good. Or they raised our price 49%, okay? Seems like now they'd be, oh, well, you know what? We could give that gas money back now that things are good. But no, don't want to hear about that either.
Well, I believe there was proper notice because I saw it on the bill.
Yeah, there was notice.
There was notice.
But...
All right. So we'll have, Crystal, answer your question about your point about the late charges.
Also about the weighing it. I mean, we go here every year and I come here every year because this never changes.
And I understand what you're doing about the weighting, but that's, this is the process that the industry does.
But without coming up here, I don't ever see what kind of avenue is going to go forward. I mean, if in 50 years, we don't move towards some means of either paying more by weight, because there's a lot of people in Bellflower getting away and not paying what they should be paying. They should be paying by the weight of the trash, period, okay? Period, all right? And then if you don't start doing that in the next 50 years, how are you going to, how are you going to make it any better?
Sir, your point is well-taken, but at this point, we need to follow this. It's something that we can look into in the future.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Hi, my name's Jody Grass.
Good evening.
We have a, um, rental property in Bellflower. We've had tenants there, um, that lived there from November of 2020 to August of 2022. They paid their, uh, trash bill through their automatic payment on their bank for the whole 21 months that they lived there. After they moved out, they put an appeal to their bank and had that money reimbursed to them, the entire amount. And now CRNR, um, that happened in January. They waited until May to notify us, the people have not lived there since August. They waited until May, just two months ago, to notify us. Um, I contacted them. All they told me was that we had a delinquent amount, so I contacted them immediately. They, um, I've asked what the amount was. They told me it's $693, which if you add that up, it does not add up to 21 months. It's an overpayment of, or an overcharge of what they would owe. I asked them if they had to put an appeal to the bank proving that this was legitimate charges for services rendered. And they said, no, because the city of Bellflower lets us charge it to the homeowner. I said, did you put these tenants, the people who you've made the contract with, did you put them into your collections department? And they said, no, because the city of Bellflower lets us charge the homeowner. So here we are with a bill that you're about to put into, uh, our property tax that is not our bill to pay. So I'm asking, one, if we could kick our bill back to CRNR and have them do their due diligence to collect that money from the people who owe it to them? And if that cannot happen, would you put an extension on it so that we can handle it with CRNR directly? We have been in contact with the previous tenants, trying to get them to pay it, but we haven't had a chance to do that because we were just notified.
Okay, she's here and I'm sure that, um, she'll be willing to speak with you after this meeting.
Okay, who's that?
Right there, Crystal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a new one, huh?
There's always something new.
Yeah. Another scam.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Number 95, 26, 450, 55. Same thing.
Okay, you know where she is?
Yeah, is it 25? 645.
Alright, anyone else? Well, did you sign in? Okay, she did.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I own a nice little beautiful bungalow in Bellflower here. I pay my CRNR bill, uh, religiously every single month. My tenant opened up an account, uh, on the address and hasn't paid the trash, so now it comes back to me. I pay my bill, so when I called CRNR and I asked them, I said, how do you guys, um, vet people that come in and open up an account? They said they don't take, they don't, they don't have to provide any information saying they're the owners or rent or anything like that. And when I open an account, it's my property, so I pay for it and everything. But these guys, they open up a different account, they dump their trash, they called in several times to dump, you know, boxes or whatever they had, and I'm stuck with the bill now. So how do I, ha, is there a way where CRNR can, 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 can put a stop to that and just confirm that they are the owners of the property? That are able to open up an account on the property? Cause I talked to the lady, I said, well, then that just, what I can do is go down the block and open an account for every single address. Saying, oh yeah, I live here at 1257, um, Lehe Street, whatever. They don't, they don't, they don't, they don't come in and confirm that. They just say, okay, yeah, sure, let me give you a bin, or let me just send you a this, or go ahead and dump the trash outside and we'll send you the bill. That's it. So that's my concern.
Alright, so we will have Crystal explain the process for that because I think this is the second time I've heard the same story.
Okay.
Okay.
So thank you.
So you're getting billed, you're getting billed twice.
Correct, so I pay my bills, so it's undermined, so I pay the bill for the entire property. But somewhere, one of the tenants opened up another account under her name, and she just dumped everything out.
And you didn't authorize your tenant to do it?
Correct, nobody has. I'm the only one that, that pays for all the bills on that property.
I think we have a similar case last year, if I remember correctly, okay?
Yeah, CNR is here, so they'll help you.
Outstanding, thank you.
So Crystal, are you jotting down the questions? There you go, alright, good.
Hi, my name is Bella Doe. I have, uh, the similar issue with CRNR. I'm a, own, the new owner of a home in Bellflower, and I ran it out to my tenant through, uh, a busy city management company, so I don't know my tenant. So I wonder if CRNR can extend the time between notice the customer and notice the property owner more than seven days because I don't know my owner, um, I don't, I don't know my tenant. So when I call CRNR and they ask me who my tenant, I have to talk to my property management to know my tenants. So it's take a long time to me to pay. And even though I paid before the 15, I still haven't noticed that I didn't pay for it. So maybe there's, uh, the glitch in the system that I didn't update yet, so I still like owe the money, but I have the proof that I paid it already.
So did you talk to your property management company about it?
Yes.
And they know the tenant?
They don't notice the tenant and the tenant, uh, reimbursed me already.
Okay, alright, okay, good, that's good.
Just wants to get it paid for the delinquent.
Hi, my name is Karina Basero.
Good evening.
I moved into Bellflower in November of last year, and when I signed up with a CRNR, uh, the previous owners had a balance due, and they wanted me to pay it. I refused to pay it. They gave me a new account number. And news around Maytime, I got a delinquent notice that I owed that amount that the previous owners, um, never paid. So that's why I'm here to challenge that. I have proof that CRNR gave me a new account number when I called in to set up service. And I've been getting invoices since then, been paying them, but that amount is still lingering.
Okay, alright. I'm sure that Crystal will address that issue.
Thank you.
Alright. Anyone else? Alright.
I would like to ask a question, basically. Now, if you have a rental property and the renter is supposed to, let's say, paying the bill for the trash, and say they don't pay that money, then that's the responsibility of the owner of the property then, am I correct?
Yeah.
So the renter, he can take off and stick, stiff the, uh, the property owner, let's say. Uh, I mean, that's what I'm believing, what's going on, on some of it. Well, it happens to be the city isn't monitoring it as to who's paying or what. It's supposed to be CRNR or whoever. And you're going with their judgment of whatever. Well, it happens to be, I know a couple of properties here in this town, they haven't been paying any trash for years. Apparently, the city ain't monitoring it, and they suppose they know who has a business license and who doesn't. And then CNRNR, who inherited, uh, the business from, uh, uh, the other people.
Calcin.
And the Adnoss, and there was deals made with them too. But, uh, now you're coming down to helping CNR prosecute or whatever for money and stuff, which to me is unfair when nobody's looking at the proper problem of it. I can name off a couple of places that the property, that the trash has not been paid in years. Couple of them that there is no trash can on-site for years. And nobody's looking into nothing.
So maybe you can give the addresses to CRNR?
I'm not in business anymore.
Okay, no, you can, the addresses.
But the place I'm, that I, I operated out of, nobody's paying trash over there. There ain't a trash can. This been going on for a couple of years. Somebody needs to collect something then, huh?
Okay, anyone else? Alright, Crystal, it's your turn. Welcome to Bellflower.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, just to answer a few questions, uh, we are doing this in the same process we've done every year through the notification process. Up until the point we even receive and send out notices for delinquencies to property owners. There's also a series of communication notices that go directly to the residents responsible for the account as well. We've had several questions in regards to tenant and property owner relationship. Some of them sound like they're on an individual case-by-case basis. I'm happy to take that information with any of those that spoke tonight, get the actual addresses so that we can follow up and research it, and if need be, remove them from the list as well. So it's just a matter of confirming that information, resolving that issue. We certainly are willing to work with everyone that has that type of scenario with a tenant, property owner relationship.
Uh, for, for the benefit of the public, can you explain the process that, um, CRNR undertakes? If there's a call for new service, let's say, a tenant, let's say, especially now with ADUs being rented out? So a tenant would call, we need trash collection. So what is the process for CRNR?
So there's a verification process also to understand what type of relationship the tenant has with the property owner, if they're the ones responsible for their other utilities, including their trash services. There's a couple of other avenues we can take as well, but we do go through questions, um, asking what's required, if it's something that the property owner, we usually have records on what's occurred previously, if there's a prior tenant or a prior, um, prior property owner. So we do, go, ju, we do go through that verification process to, to document that. In some of these cases I've heard tonight, it sounds like there's some discrepancies between who's responsible, has it wasn't. One of them, the account being, uh, a property owner that actually is taking care of it. Those are things we, if we hear those types of scenarios. In this case, when you've received a notice, we go back and research it, and we'll be willing to work with them and remove them off the list.
Okay, and then, uh, do you have this, uh, a similar process for, let's say, there's a management company?
Yes, same thing happens. So the management company might just be handling the actual occupancy. If there's any other responsibilities, that's where we would understand a little bit more between what the relationship is and what the management company is responsible for.
Okay, alright, very good.
Um, we did have some questions also in regards to the, in regards to the late fees. That's in accordance with our contract as well. It's on something that accrues right away. You receive notices and information prior to late feeing, late fees being incurred. So there is a process in place regarding that as well.
And I think the gentleman asked a question about the, the late fee towards the end when, at this time, if he pays now, there's still gonna be a late, late fee.
I'd have to look at the account, but we're willing to work with them on that if they're willing to pay, yeah.
Alright, very good. Alright, any question of Crystal? Ms. Denning? Nope?
Nope.
Okay, very good. And then, um, do you want to meet with them outside?
Yes, I'd like to just, cause I, I didn't hear really any address specific on property. So I'd like to make sure that I get that information with some of the members that spoke here today. So I have those addresses. We can go back and follow up and research that and work with them on the individual basis.
So if you have any specific question for Ms. Denning of CRNR, please go outside in the lobby and then she will get your address and address those individually. Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. So with that, uh, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, second by Councilmember Sanchez to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. Alright, gentlemen? Whose dog is that? Alright.
Hey. I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-25, resolution ordering the delinquent referred service charges be assessed against the property owners in properties and such charges transferred to the county tax rolls.
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Coops, second by, uh, Denton, Council, second by Councilmember Coops to adopt Resolution 23-25. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Mayor Santanas?
Aye.
Alright, moving along, item 11B, Mr. Stewart.
Second public hearing considers possible action deductive public hearing to consider adopting Resolution Number 23-26, resolution adopting a comprehensive fee schedule to cover costs incurred from providing various public services in superseding Resolution Number 17-16, and Ms. Guerin has the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council.
Good evening.
Oh, this is gonna be a high-energy staff report, I can tell.
Before you, before you start, is that your dog?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
His name is Harvey, named after Harvey Dent, because of the marking.
Oh, I see. Alright.
For tonight's presentation, we will discuss the updates made to the city's comprehensive user fee schedule. To provide an overview, the city generally provides two types of services, general and special services. General services are provided for the benefit of the entire community. Common examples are providing public safety services and street maintenance. The costs for such services are generally paid for through various tax revenue sources. On the other hand, special services are provided to or for the benefit of a limited number of individuals or businesses. Common examples are planning reviews and bu, building inspections. User fees are charged to recover the cost of providing special services. The city engaged Weldon Financial Services to prepare a cost of service and fee analysis, commonly referred to as a user fee study. Weldon is very familiar with the city's cost account components, as they have prepared the initial comprehensive fee study in 2005, which was later updated in 2008. They also completed two comprehensive user fee studies in October 2012 and March 2017. The principal goal of the study is to help the city determine the full cost of providing special services and develop a rational basis of setting a defensible fee schedule. The recommended user fee amounts must be carefully balanced. The city may recover up to the actual cost of providing the special service. However, fees in excess of the actual cost may constitute a special tax that cannot be collected absent of a voter approval. On the contrary, if the charge is too little, the city will be unable to fully recover its cost, and the general fund will most likely subsidize the cost of special service. The law does not require mathematical certainty in calculating the recommended fees. It only requires a reasonable relationship between the cost of service and the fee amount. In addition, the study aims to identify the recovery level percentage. The comprehensive fee schedule is also set up so that all fees can easily be tracked and updated by the CPI. The first fee adjustment is proposed to be made and effective at the beginning of fiscal year 2425. The recoverable cost is calculated by multiplying staff's fully burdened hourly rate by the average time it takes to provide a special service. The fully burdened hourly rate takes into account personal costs, so salaries, benefits, and taxes. It also takes into account operating and central service departments overhead cost. The total cost from these three components is divided by the productive hours to come up with the fully burdened hourly rate. For a planning fee, the cost of software used to keep track of the permits is an operating department's overhead cost. Now, finance is time spent to process the invoice and pay the software is an example of a central service cost. In addition, out-of-pocket costs like direct consultant charges are added to the fee calculation. Recommended fees are generally rounded down to the whole dollar. Here are some examples of user fees recovered at 100% of the full cost. This slide shows user fees recovered at less than 100% of the full cost. Except for the ones that are limited by the BMC and other laws, a full list of fees that staff recommends that the city council considers recovering at less than 100% of the cost is highlighted in the staff report. In certain situations, providing a subsidy is a tool to encourage participation, um, promote access to services and ensure compliance when cost is prohibitive to residents and businesses. These are some fees that are affected by statutes and the maximum fees limited by law. Some fees may vary greatly depending on the extent of actual services provided. That's why they are recommended to be tracked individually and be billed based on actual costs incurred. Similar to the previous slide, this fee is billed based on actual cost, but requires an upfront deposit. Itemized accounting will be maintained by the department and Itemized accounting will be maintained by the department in charge of the fee. And any unexpended deposit will be refunded to the customer upon completion of the work. Based on the recommended fees and the average of typical or normal activities from fiscal year nineteen twenty to twenty-two, twenty-three, the estimated annual revenue increase is a total of three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Staff recommends that the city council open the public hearing, take documentary and testimonial evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-six, approving the comprehensive fee schedule to recover costs incurred from providing various public services and superseding resolution number seventeen dash sixteen. Or alternatively, discuss and take other related, other action related to this item. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Tony Thrasher from Weldon Financial Services and staff are also here to assist with any questions.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Guerin, for a very comprehensive report. Uh, I, I can just, um, conclude that you guys put in a lot of hours to put this together. Um, uh, can you bring up the, the previous slide? I just wanna clarify one thing, that this is not really an increase in revenue. It's just, we're gonna recover more cost. So I don't want to leave the impression that, um, to the residents that we, we are making money out of this. We are not. We are recovering our cost. That's one thing I wanna point out. Uh, and secondly, uh, someone who might read the, the full report in its entirety, I don't want them to leave the impression that, um, there's some staff that are paid more than the city manager. Like the assistant city manager, like the director of economic development and director of, uh, I think, uh, public safety. I don't, or, or the city manager is working excessive number of hours. That's why his rate is low. So.
So some of the.
You know what I'm getting at? So I wanted you to explain why certain positions in the city, uh, the, um, the rate is higher than the city manager. Okay. Fair enough?
Yes. And just to give a little more background on that, it's because of the overhead rates that each department, um, has. Some departments carry a larger overhead cost than others. So like public safety or economic development, their overhead costs are larger than city managers.
So why is the, the overhead rate being absorbed by Public Works is so high?
Um, they.
Equipment?
That's. That's one. And also they receive a lot of service from, um, central service departments such as finance, human resources, just because of the number of the employees they have, the number of agendas. Those are some of the items that were used in the study to allocate the overhead cost.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So a lot of departments are just charging their, the overhead to Public Works, in effect.
So the central service departments, their, um, their costs are allocated across the board, um, to those what we call operating departments, like planning, public works and public works is, uh, if not the biggest, one of the biggest departments that we have here.
So it's not that case where the city manager is working excessive number of hours?
I'm sure he works hard.
Okay, very good. Any question of Ms. Guerin? Uh, council member Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick question. I, uh, from the report, the last study was done in two thousand and seventeen and it was implemented in two thousand and nineteen.
It was done in two thousand and seventeen, March twenty seventeen, and then most of the fees were made effective immediately with the exception of building and safety and, um, planning. Um, the fees were effective, I believe, in April, and we also had an ordinance update back in two thousand and seventeen. So it was made effective in the same year. And then they were adjusted for CPI in two thousand and nineteen and twenty twenty.
Got it. Okay. And, and that was during, and then during the pandemic, we, we didn't raise. Okay, we didn't adjust. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it for now, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Council member Dent?
I have, I have nothing.
Okay. So my, my overall impression is I, I think this is a fair, um, um, cost chart, so to speak. Because if you look at the, if you look at the percentage of recovery, it ranges from eleven percent to ninety-three percent. Uh, so we're not recovering the full cost, basically.
Most of the fees were recovering at a hundred percent.
Hundred percent, but a lot of them are less than a hundred percent. Yeah. And I think if I remember correct, there's only, there's, I think, one, one item even went down.
Yes, some of, there were some decreases.
Decreases. Okay. Because the, the cost went down or?
Um, some of the departments have revisited the way they're doing, um, uh, the service. There may be some improvements which have caused the time spent to go down. Um, that could be a factor as to why specific fees would decrease.
That's why overall, my impression is you guys, um, staff and Weldon did a, a a very comprehensive job in looking at this because you're just doing that carryover what was, you know, what was studied in the, in the last, the most previous one. And you came up with really a, a, um, kind of a, a different, a different look, so to speak. And, and really analyze what really is the cost and how much of that can we, can we recover?
Yeah.
So thank you so much for that. All right. With that, um, is our motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by council member Coops, seconded by council member Sanchez to open the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this very exciting item?
Must not be no contractors out there, right?
Well, I guess they, they like, maybe they like the fees.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by council member Coops, seconded by council member Sanchez to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. All right, gentlemen? What's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion here.
All right. Go ahead, council member Coops.
Uh, consideration possible action to conduct public hearing, adopting resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-six. A resolution adopting a comprehensive fee schedule to recover costs incurred from providing our various public services and superseding resolution number seventeen dash sixteen. That's my motion.
All right. I'll second the motion. Uh, motion by council member Coops, seconded by the mayor to adopt resolution twenty-three dash twenty-six. A roll call, please.
Council member Coops?
Aye.
Council member Sanchez?
Aye.
Council member Dent?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right. We don't have any ordinances and resolutions for consideration. No consideration items for this evening. Uh, moving on to consent calendar. Uh, anyone that have a conflict? On the consent calendar?
I do not.
No conflicts?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by council member Denton and seconded by council member Coops to approve the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Council member Coops?
Aye.
Council member Sanchez?
Aye.
Council member Dent?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right, moving on to council reports. Council member Coops?
Yes, uh, you know, we've had an exciting and historical occurrence this past week. In fact, this past Friday night, for the first time in the history of Bellflower, a city's council member had a spouse who gave birth to a child.
Thank you, council member Coops.
And so I think that deserved recognition as the city's been in business a long time. We've had a lot of council members. And obviously, uh, this occurrence reflects your young age, but nevertheless, uh, I'm not gonna divulge all the particulars on it. We'll let you do that when it's the proper time. But I just wanted to give you the proper recognition because it's, it's kinda cool.
See, Dan, that's what happens when you bring the average age of the councilmen down. Like hitting a young guy, you can have that kinda, have babies born.
Now hopefully, the next time we have a meeting, which won't be till August, my wife and I are anticipating another grandchild. So I'll make that announcement at the appropriate time. But that does not have near the significance
Yeah.
of a council member. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, council member Coops. Council member Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd like to say thank you to my colleagues, uh, for acknowledging that. Um, I'll provide some more information. Um, I, you know, the wonderful news is that I get to share that on, uh, on July sixth, my second son, Sage Zavi Din Sanchez was born. Sage and his mother, Suzie, my wife, are doing well. They're resting comfortably at home. Um, and, um, if my memory serves me correctly, I, I remember that a, um, that at a meeting, that a meeting was adjourned in the honor of my first, uh, son. I wasn't on council at the time, but I remember that being done. And, and I think one of the hardest things I'm gonna have to do, and I know for those of you who have multiple children, is making sure that both children feel the equal love. So, so if, uh.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you on that. Um, and then the second thing, uh, I'd like to just, uh, uh, say how I appreciate, um, my colleagues' indulgence, uh, while I attended a work-related issue on Monday. Um, I assure you that it won't be a common thing or occurrence, uh, and again, just, uh, thank you for, for your indulgence on that, uh, absence. Uh, with that said, it's, uh, it's been a great week. It's been a long weekend. Uh, and I look forward to thirty-hour naps every now and then. So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Sanchez. Council member Dent?
I just have one thing. Everybody knows that Mr. Coops are a historian up here. So the next meeting, I would like a report from how many grandchildren were born from the council members that are up here during their tenure.
All right. Well, I, I appreciate, well, you know, I can give a number and no one's gonna challenge it.
You're a smart man. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, council member Dent. Um, just a couple of things to note. Uh, first of all, as a reminder, uh, will be recess on the fourth, Monday of July. So there's no meeting on the fourth Monday of July. Uh, we will resume our city council meeting on August fourteenth, which is second, second Monday of August. And, um, just a couple of things I want to point out. Um, council member Coops and I attended the, um, celebration of the hotshots, the, um, nineteen seconds of silence in recognition of those firefighters. Oh, and council member Sanchez, uh, was there too. We didn't see each other, but it was, it was a big crowd. Uh, they, they told us that there's gonna be two hundred people attending. It's, I think, at least
Double.
three hundred fifty. And I'm glad that there are so many paramedics there, so many emergency staff there, because otherwise I'll be worried. So that was a great event. And then next one, um, council member Coops and I attended the flag raising ceremony at the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. It, it was well-attended. It was, um, held at Carpentero, um, uh, church. Uh, and also I'd like to invite everyone to the opening, grand, official grand opening of Dennis Restaurant on Rosecrans Avenue. Uh, it's on one oh one three six to be held on tomorrow at three P M. And also on Thursday, Madres Brunch, uh, located at one five seven two two. Uh, Liquid Boulevard will have their grand opening. That's a, a nice restaurant on, uh, the north side of the seat of Bellflower. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting, uh, in recognition.
Recognition?
Recognition.
Give the full name, Sage?
Sage, uh, Zavi Sanchez. Okay, with that, we'll be adjouring this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty P M. Again, Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is now adjourned.